All right, we are gonna go ahead and get started with our work session this evening. And I will be turning things over to Dr. Ahart. We're gonna be discussing summer school and also the expansion of virtual campus to include middle school. So Dr. Ahart, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. I've invited a few guests with us today. The planning for these things continues. We have, we're making a lot of progress on the summer, on both the summer programming, as well as the expansion of the virtual campus to include middle school. In fact, I signed off on a document today to send off to the Department of Education so that we will get, so we will become accredited. So we think that's an exciting opportunity. So what I'm gonna do is ask two individuals to start us out by walking through the two sides of our summer programming that involves both academics and, and, and full day services that will involve a whole host of opportunities. So I'll ask Allison and Noel, Allison Vukovich and Noel Nelson to, to join us and kind of walk us through the plan for the summer and, and the challenges that we're still trying to overcome, especially in regards to staffing.
Yeah, I guess I'm happy to go first. Allison, feel free to jump in. I did put together a really short PowerPoint just so that you can have the numbers in front of you. I'm pulling it up right here. So we have been, as Tom said, we've been planning for the past many weeks to pull off our summer programming, knowing from the get-go that our greatest challenge would certainly be getting staff. So we'll talk about where we stand numbers-wise, and we'll also talk about what we're doing to collaborate with DMEA to recruit more staff. But essentially, for summer programming, we're looking at providing programming for incoming kindergarteners through graduating seniors. Traditionally, our high school usually only targets seniors, but we're expanding that to include all grade levels as well as incoming kindergarten. So we're, we're expanding pre-K 12. We're looking at offering two sessions. I'm assuming you all can see my PowerPoint. Is that correct?
No.
Oh.
Oh.
Yes, I can see it.
Yes, we can see it.
I can see it.
Okay, good. So two sessions, June 7th through July 2nd, and then the second session, July 12th through August 6th. Students may not necessarily participate in both sessions. And enrollment will vary from session one to session two. We're having a harder time staffing session two than we are session one. So enrollment in session one will likely be larger, but we're, we're continuing to work to recruit to ensure as many students access as possible. I'll let, I'll let Allison talk a little bit more about PM, but essentially, what we've learned, not surprisingly, from our families is that folks really want that full-day option. So we're offering academics, prioritizing board goal areas in the morning for literacy and math, a robust academic programming and, and working with community partners to ensure consistency of programming regardless of the site or the location or the provider. And then in the afternoon, we'll be looking at metro or community partner programming to provide those kind of wraparound services for families. Really, what it comes down to, the two factors are dictating our capacity. Of course, staffing, which I already referenced, and then Allison can talk about limitations to metro licensing and guidelines of how many students we can actually take legally and still stay within our ratios. As I said, we're prioritizing board goal areas and COVID incompletes for high school. And so really wanting to make sure students are getting what they need to not just recover credit, but more importantly, recover learning that was missed. And we're really looking at, this is the first year that we've approached it this way, but I would imagine that it will sustain. We're looking at a combination of ELL programming, special education programming, and then our community partnership programming and consolidating all of that under one umbrella. So elementary, we've established host sites, and we've done that to where we have a district pot where staff will apply, and then we will allocate them out according to numbers and capacity. The other variable that's impacting whether or not an elementary school has a host site is our construction schedule. So not every school has available space to offer summer school. So we've really consolidated across the district, and you can see which schools are being served where. So across the top, in the dark blue, Capital View, Cattell, Edmonds Greenwood, Park Ave, River Woods, South Union, and Stowe, those are currently serving as our elementary host sites. And then the, the schools listed below are kind of the feeder schools, and enrollment will follow suit. So kids at McKinley, for example, will be served at Park Avenue if they're identified through summer school eligibility. And then, of course, we have community partnerships happening, happening across city. And you can see those are listed below, and those have always been in existence. But what we're really doing is trying to provide them financial assistance as well as staffing, curriculum supports, so that we have, at least for the academic portion of the day, we have some consistency across program regardless of the attendance area. Middle school, you can see our host sites are Hoyt, Goodrell, Meredith, and Brody. And then we have community partnerships in existence at Hyatt Meredith and McCombs via the Boys and Girls Club. So same general approach, serving literacy and math as priority areas of service. This has not been updated this week, but as of last week, we were, you can see where we are as far as number of, of teachers, and then how that translates to the number of students that we can serve. So this is nowhere near what we want to serve and who we'd like to serve. But at the end of the day, we are trying to keep class sizes fairly low. Elementary is around 12. Middle school is a little bit higher, but because we're talking about serving students with significant gaps, we want to keep the numbers manageable so that we can actually target those gaps and hopefully fill those gaps, or at least close some gaps prior to fall. So elementary, you can see for session one, we're at about 100 teachers. Session two, 76. Middle school is, is, is a lot lower. We have added to those. I was not prepared for this evening. I apologize. I would have had those numbers updated, but you can see where we stand as of a couple of weeks ago. High school, we're still advertising and filling vacancies, and so it's our goal to serve about 1,200 kids in high school. So that's currently where we stand. Allison, I'll let you talk about the partnerships with our community, and then certainly we're happy to answer questions or open it up for discussion.
Yeah, no, you did, you did a great job covering it. We're excited to partner with kind of teaching and learning from the Metro Kids lens. And then we have amazing partners who are helping us fill that gap and really kind of stretch our capacity. Partners that have, you know, been partnering with us in the summer, but we're really just kind of putting it on steroids to serve as many kids as possible. So it's really a, an effort from all facets of our organization and all corners of our community, and I'm really excited about the synergy that we have on moving in one direction. I would say from a partnership lens, the difference is everybody's using our curriculum. So from a community perspective, we've always had great partners, but they, in years past, have hired their own teachers. This year, they're gonna use our teachers, and our teachers are going to all be teaching the same thing. And we're really excited about those opportunities and what we'll learn from it and how we'll continue to get better.
One thing I'd, I'd just add, thank you, Noel and Allison. We continue to hire, and we have a few, a few more tricks up our sleeve on how we're going to recruit internally. But if, if we need additional staff, which I'm hopeful we won't, but if we do need additional staff, we will recruit outside of, of DMPS in an effort to make sure that every single student that we can, that we can recruit into summer programming has a seat. The other thing that I want to emphasize, and I've been working on this a lot the last couple of weeks, is ensuring that our State Department of Education doesn't put an artificially early limit on our ability to spend SRR funds. We have a considerable amount of dollars coming in to help with this work. And so certainly, we're going to be doing a much more robust summer programming this summer, and we would like to replicate that for the following two or three summers. And the, the, the federal, the federal guidelines right now would allow us to spend through the fall of, of '23 with the possibility of carryover, much like we, we have a one-time ability to, to carry over Title I funds. So that would get us through the summer of '24. But right now, our, our State Department of Education is saying that spending needs to cease in June of '23, which would largely prevent us from doing this kind of programming for more than two summers. So we're pulling in some, some muscle from, from outside of the state to, to help us nudge that, that timeline as late as it possibly can be, so we can serve as many students for as long as we can using this real gift of the SRR $3.
The only thing I might add, as Tom talked about of, of teacher recruitment, is we have created a $500 incentive. And so if a teacher gets hired, well, anyone who applies is, is essentially hired. If they, if they sign on to teach summer school for four weeks and they complete it at 95% attendance on the teacher's part, then they're eligible for a $500 incentive bonus, and that's, that's been worked on with, in collaboration with DMEA. And it's, and it's been made clear that that's, that's strictly due to COVID and the conditions that we're under and, and understanding and acknowledging. It's been a really long year. So we don't really know if the sign-on bonus has had an impact. I would imagine that will, I would like to survey staff who have signed on to see if that was a factor and, and something we need to look at sustaining. But currently, what we're, what we're projecting, and the final numbers aren't in, that we're just under to, to run a full summer session, is just under about $2 million. And so when we look at multiplying that times two or three years, that adds up quickly. And that's, that's really at the, at the capacity that we've, that we've described.
Thank you, Noel and Allison, for presenting. I'd like to open it up to my board colleagues if you have any questions based off of the information you've heard this evening.
Yeah, I do. Tom, when you talk about the, the state wanting the stuff to be sent by June and the Fed saying by September or whatever, is that, is that an interpretation issue? Or what's the root of that?
Well, there's language, there's language in the, in the, in the federal, in the federal law that gives states some latitude in, in interpretation of, of some of those guidelines. Certainly, the intent is, a, a, a large part of the intent of the federal legislation is for recovery of, of learning opportunity. And so we think we have a very good case to make there. It's understandable why they want to do that, so they can close books real cleanly on the state's fiscal year rather than the federal government's fiscal year. But certainly, if you're talking about what's the best interest of our students, we're not the only, the only district who's going to be advocating for that. We've had some luck in the past on some special education-specific issues of bringing in some, some expertise out of the Council of the Great City Schools to bring some, some pressure to bear from DC. And, and we haven't gone down that road yet, but that, that may be the, the road that we go down. If they, if they're insistent upon June '23 as the deadline for spending, it certainly prevents a, a ton of opportunity that, that we very much want to take advantage of.
I have some questions around curriculum. I'd imagine that with the large number of students that are going to qualify for this programming, that we will have students at very different levels in every, in every classroom. And I know, or it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that currently in our classrooms, we are giving the grade level expected content and then having extended core time to kind of backfill the, the lost time in the classroom and in trying to get students back up to speed. How are we supporting our, our teachers as, as they walk into that July, June 7th date with a brand-new class, having never worked with these students? And, and how are we giving them data to let them know where those kids are at? How do we differentiate? Or at least give them what they need to be prepared to differentiate on day one and hit the ground running?
That's a good question, Kim. We've built into the budget and the expectation upon hire of a full-day professional learning that will be delivered prior to summer school. And so in that professional learning, not only will we work with them on the actual curriculum, and we have, we have units that we weren't able to get to this school year that we'll be utilizing in materials. We don't have to write new curriculum or go out and seek other curriculum. But really, it's also about establishing a mindset of, we've been working with various national partners, especially related to our equity work, and we're being warned against a mindset that goes intervention-heavy and remediation-heavy. And so it, we're gonna really work to establish with our teachers a mindset of, even though we acknowledge they'll have spring data and they'll have information on where student gaps are, and we'll certainly hit those foundational skills hard and heavy, we also don't want to take our, our, our eye off of grade level expectations. And so if we approach this from a remediation standpoint only, it is likely that many kids' gaps won't get closed and, and will continue to teach below grade level and below expectation. So it's our goal to provide supports to achieve grade level, not lower the bar and fall into the remediation trap that we know districts across the country are very tempted to do. And so all of that will be part of that teacher prep, but that's actually not even just specific to summer school. That's the mindset that we need to adopt moving forward over the next several years, because this gap that existed well before COVID and was just, you know, had a light shine on it because of COVID is, is not a new issue. And so the work that we have, have ahead of us is, is about high expectations for kids and, and doing what we know needs to, to happen, but it's not gonna happen in one summer. This is, this is gonna be a several-years recovery, and we're confident that we have plans to get that done. But we don't want any false promises to the board or our community that summer school alone is gonna, is gonna be the solution.
Thank you. And then from the standpoint of high school, are, are we going to be focused on topic recovery? Or I know that you had mentioned COVID incompletes, but I'd imagine that we have some students that are, are just single or multiple topics that need to be recovered versus, you know, the entire semester or course work.
That's exactly right, Kim. We're gonna have an actual combination of both. So for Algebra I, for example, that's a board goal. That's a priority area. We're looking at many, many students who are actually just going to repeat the entire course, because we don't want these gaping holes. We're thinking long game with these students. We're not just thinking graduation. And so we're looking at differentiating of, of a combination of some topic recovery, but some actual entire course redos, because we're not confident that they got it the first time. We're not, it's not that we're not confident. We have evidence that they didn't get it the first time.
Right. And for some of these students, they haven't seen, they potentially haven't seen algebra since January. If they took it in the first quarter for semester and second quarter, second semester. So there could be quite a, a amount of time since they've even cracked those books. So just one last question. How are we reaching out to families that qualify? How do they know that they qualify? How are they signing up?
Allison, do you want to talk about our registration process?
Sure. So once students who qualify are identified, we are working with all of our support professionals and our teachers to call those families and invite them to the program. So knowing it's a lot of ELL families, we're working with our bilingual family liaisons to make sure families understand it. There's a Qualtrics, so schools are filling that out. It's flowing to the site coordinators, and then it's flowing to our after-school team. And then they're calling the families to make sure they understand the program, make sure that they are registered for Metro Kids, make sure that all of that, you know, Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, and are really supporting families through that. So it really is a, a pretty intensive process. And I think each day, we learn something a little bit new on, hey, we didn't think of that. But we're growing as an organization. And it, it is really kind of neat how all, all areas are really coming together to make this happen. I don't know that we've ever worked as closely together to accomplish something, so that's really been a great outcome. Really all moving in the same direction towards this.
Well, thank you for that. I can only imagine what a heavy lift that is. Appreciate it.
And one thing with high school too, and I don't know if we talked about it, we are focusing on incoming ninth graders as well and doing a very intensive incoming ninth grade program. And then we're also doing an intense focus on incoming sixth graders. So we know that those transitional years are so tough, so we're really looking at what we can do. So that academic piece is so important, and we know that, but so is that belonging piece. So that afternoon component, what we really want to do is, for middle school and high school especially, that engagement is so big. So we're looking at, how can we bring in partners? We're gonna do DJ class. We're gonna do dance class. We're gonna do a whole lot of really great things in the afternoon through our community schools team. So if, you know, learning isn't the thing that's gonna get them in the door, it's gonna be the engagement.
We've got a couple of questions. First off, can, can someone send out the, the PowerPoint that you shared after the board meeting so that we can see that? I, I can't recall if I, if I just missed this or not, but are we providing transportation this summer?
Yes. So when they register, that will all go through the process of requesting transportation, and then that routes to the various departments.
That's good. That's great. So I guess my next thought then is, and we're providing food services as well, assuming breakfast and, and lunch.
Yes.
Do we have the staff to cover transportation and food service and custodial work? Are we worried about finding folks there?
We are still working on getting our final numbers, because our teaching staff is really limiting the capacity. We have, we have a high level of confidence that we will have enough support staff with transportation and food service to pull it off. But until we get our final numbers, which are, we're still a week out, to get those to transportation, we won't know for certain.
Well, my, my, my thought on all of this is actually, goes back to the folks that are doing that work. And I, and I, I'm worried. I'm worried about not being able to serve as many students as we can, because teachers are, are rightfully exasperated at the end of this year. And, and so I'm, I'm glad you're, you're, you're thinking outside the box. You're willing to offer bonuses and things like that. My request is that you, you extend that, that policy of offering bonuses for folks that, that show up and do the work beyond just the teaching staff to the food service staff, to the custodial staff, to the transportation staff as well, because they're in a role in making this happen. And, you know, they're, they're providing a lot of incentive and, and, and access for students to participate this summer. So if we have the money and if we're able to do it for one class of workers, I think we should do it for, for others as well. You know, the, the last thing I want to share is that, so we had our, our monthly Head Start parent meeting this afternoon, and there was, I think, only two parents on this particular meeting, and we talked a bit about, about summer school. And I think that there's, I think there's, anecdotally, just from those two parents, some, some confusion about registration for summer school, registration for next academic year. What they've, some parents, I think, are, are unclear about what they are signed up for and what they're not signed up for yet. So I just want you all to be, be present to that. You've probably heard some of that same feedback as well. But given that this is a new way of doing summer school, this is the first time a lot of parents have been in this position. And, and I'm hearing that there's, there's some confusion about what their, what their student is, is eligible for right now.
Thanks, Rob. Make a note of that.
I know we've talked a little bit about the fatigue that teachers are experiencing, and I know that that's real, but can you just walk us through, like, what does a sample day for the kids? Because I also have sensed in my own classroom and from talking with other teachers, that kids are also feeling that same level of fatigue. For many of our students, they haven't finished, well, they haven't finished a school year for two years now. But it's been two years. They've, they've wrapped up a year for what that looks like. So can you kind of walk us through what that looks like from, like, a day, just, you know, for the student perspective too? Because I know that, especially for our younger kids, like, this has been a really long year.
It sure has. Kelly, do you want to talk through elementary? And then Sarah, maybe you can chime in for middle school, and then high school is kind of its own beast.
Yes, I'd be happy to. So for elementary, it's, it's an eight to 11:30 timeframe. And we've built, as Noel spoke about before, we've built the lessons around our EL Module Four, which we didn't hit this year, and, and, and that was by the recommendation of EL and our work with them as partners. So that module is really what takes the learning from Module Three and turns, makes it, like, uses that knowledge to then apply it to a social issue in your, in your community. So like, the students, you learn about birds in Module Three, and then Module Four, they talk about like, places that birds live and why birds are important to a community, and how can you protect the birds and building birdhouses and those types of things. So the Module Four is really a lot of culmination. So we're gonna be able to use that in summer school, build lessons around that and experiences, and, and working with Allison as much as we can, because it, to provide also extension experiences that, that support that in the afternoon as well. And so they'll have that content in the morning, and then they'll also have a foundational block. So that will be the, the, we'll use a, it's called West Virginia Phonics, and it's, it has a scope and sequence. It's free and available to us to use. It, it won't disadvantage a student that may have been in the Orton-Gillingham method of teaching phonics or our EL skills block, because we have schools in both. This would mirror, this would work for students that were in either of those type of methodology. So they would have that foundational block, K5, and they'll also have math. And with math, we're gonna work on definitely fluency, but also math identity and some problem solving. So that's what their math time will look like. They'll build in, we'll build in morning, like, circle time and afternoon circle time. And then, of course, breaks and recess. We're trying to add a lot of movement and activity to the actual learning times, but also teachers having flexibility to take some breaks as needed. And then they'll go into the metro programming, which will be an extension of their day and, and add a lot more of the, you know, the, the, the play-based type things into, into their day. So trying to pack a lot into the morning and with movement and the things that we need to do, but then the afternoon really be focusing on them socializing and getting in that play-based learning.
Yep. So we will transition from learning. So Metro Kids will take over, or our partner programs will take over at 11:30, transition the kids to lunch, and then we will do engagement, SEO, all of those great things in the afternoon. And then Fridays, we'll take field trips. So we want, obviously, safely to take the kids into, to the community. We're gonna partner with the YMCA to teach some water safety. That's really important, especially when we're serving our ELL students on teaching that water safety. So we've got a lot of great things and great partners that we will bring in on the days that we're not taking field trips. So the kids are gonna have a great summer.
For, can you hear me okay? Yeah, okay. Sorry, I have my headphones in. For our rising sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, as Noel mentioned, we will be
Yeah, okay. Sorry, I have my headphones in. Um, for our rising sixth, seventh and eighth graders, as Noel mentioned, we will be focusing on our board goal areas of literacy and math. Same as with elementary, students will begin the day with breakfast if they um, wanna take advantage of that opportunity. And then they will transition either into a math or an ELA experience. And then we'll switch and have the opposite experience in the second half of their morning. The ELA experience is really meant to get kids deep into text and to do so using protocols and um, processes that they'll be experiencing as they launch in a module one next year. So to get them thinking, reading, talking, writing, um, you know, speaking and listening, using the protocols that they'll be familiar with when they start and launch into their, into their next school year. And really digging deep into really engaging um, represent kind of tech that may not necessarily be a part of the tech set they'll experience in the coming grade, but they'll be practicing all the ways that they'll use that. For our math, we're approaching in, in many of the same ways Kelly talked about math for elementary. The I curriculum students to process and think and discuss um, their math learning, to build a solid and uh, positive math entity and to do that through community building in their classroom. And so the math, um, the math learning we're designing for those spaces is, is um, based on the work of Joe Bowler, who really thinks about math and being a mathematician is part of the whole person. So rather than experience um, a, a module or an upcoming lesson in the same way, we're building all those foundational human things as, as well as we're learning the, the math piece. Students will then um, transition into that mealtime for lunch and then into the partner, the site-based partner programming that Allison mentioned earlier, that has a lot of great opportunities and same Fridays um, will, um, will have a different experience than um, outside of academics for, for our students.
That was much more detailed than I, than I would have needed, but I do appreciate you walking us through that because it does sound like there's some, you know, some opportunities for kids to be kids this summer and that was kind of what my eyes on. So I'm glad to have the opportunity to be social and to be together. So thank you.
Hey Allison, I had a quick question about the afternoon component. So because it's Metro Kids, will there be a charge for students who are in the second half that they wouldn't have in the first half? And if so, um, are there scholarships or other ways that we're able to help offset those costs for students who may not have the resources for those afternoon components?
Yep. Great question. So as those qual checks come in, we're calling every family and doing kind of a needs assessment with them. If we can um, qualify them through childcare assistance, we're supporting the families on that application. If that is not an option or they're not wanting to do that, then we do have scholarship opportunities.
Are there any other questions before we make our transition to middle school virtual learning?
Yeah, I do have one actually. I, I guess logistically here, are kids signing up for the whole day and are they signing up for both sessions? Is it one? Do they have the opportunity to do both? What, what does that look like?
So at elementary, um, we're wanting them to sign up for both sessions and we're finding most of that um, forums I see coming through are doing that. They are signing up for both sessions. And that would be our goal for elementary. Um, for middle school, that's not necessarily our goal. Because um, we just want kids there. So if they sign up for one or either session, we're okay with that. And then what was the other part of your question?
Is it full day or is that optional too?
That's optional. So if an elementary parent says, you know, I actually already have childcare figured out, they can say that they want uh, transported home at the end of the learning component and then we will transport home. If they opt in to Metro Kids or a partnership program, then parents are picking up at the end of the day. But we're running until five thirty, so it's convenient for families. And we're actually finding a mix of both. And there, there's really no rhyme or reason as to why parents are doing, are picking. And they're just, the parents that we've talked to, they're just really grateful. So that's been really great to be able to call parents and talk with them and um, really meet the needs that they have for their families.
Okay, hearing no other questions, um, Dr. Ahead, I'll turn it over so we can transition to middle school virtual learning.
Great. Um, I think we have uh, John Mendoza here, who's the principal of our virtual campus. Few introductory remarks. You may remember about three years ago, two years ago, three years ago, we opened um, virtual campus after doing, you know, some, some piloting in the summertime, trying to figure out what um, what student profile could, could reasonably expect to be successful in a fully virtual um, setting. And since, and we, we initially wanted to start with a certain number of students and um, quickly we uh, we more than doubled the number of students in that first year that we thought, we thought we were going to serve for, for a whole host of reasons. We have students who um, who are incarcerated. And so they, they were able to actually access a full, you know, a full um, academic experience via virtual campus. We had students with health issues, which prevented them from um, from participating in, in school physically. Um, and so we, we connected with them remotely. We had students who uh, because of uh, activities that they were engaged in, had to travel um, a lot, aspiring, aspiring um, performance artists, et cetera, who were able to stay fully engaged with us through um, virtual campus. And um, that number that we're serving in virtual campuses continued to grow. And then thankfully, we had that well in place um, prior to the pandemic. And so we really had um, a, a really high quality virtual um, learning option, especially at that high school level. Uh, we, we were slowly building toward, building the curriculum because all of our curriculum is, is developed by Des Moines teachers. We were, we were working on building capacity um, from a, from a courseware standpoint so that eventually we could offer a middle school, a fully virtual middle school experience. Some of that development work was accelerated, but not, but, but the broad work that we were doing had to be slowed down a little bit because of the pandemic. So um, we are um, hoping that um, that some of the families who, who would otherwise apply for um, open enrollment out um, for a, a virtual experience at CAM or, or Clayton Ridge will now um, select DMPS virtual campus um, at the middle school level rather than leaving the district. And we'll also now have a, a, a really good way to connect with those students who for a variety of reasons that I referenced with virtual high school, um, just have a, a real difficult time being connected to a physical on-campus experience. And so we've been um, working diligently at getting everything in place so that we can get accreditation for virtual middle school. And um, as, as John and Noel will share, um, learning um, as much as we can, especially in this first full year, about what, um, what we ought to be thinking about as we move forward um, beyond this sort of COVID period of our history. So um, John or Noel, do you wanna kind of flesh out more, in more detail um, from my opening remarks?
Yeah, thanks, Tom. Um, I'm John Mendoza. I don't know if I've really met everybody here, especially since COVID. But I am the, the director of virtual campus. And like Tom had said, we've been working diligently um, through a task force on the expansion of virtual campus to offer a middle school as well. So we will now be a six twelve building. And as uh, Tom remarked earlier as well, I did send him a uh, assurance letter to sign as well to finish the accreditation process. So right now, currently our nine twelve building is an accredited standalone virtual high school. And now we are submitting for our, our, the six eight portion to be accredited as well. So we just have to, we actually have to reapply for all of it um, to be a six twelve building. So there are a few more um, pieces of that application, such as getting our demo courses ready and set up for the DE before that's complete, but uh, we should be well on our way to making our middle school accredited as well. So when we started this, this expansion, um, we decided to expand uh, to uh, offer six eight, but also expand what our high school could do. After this year, we had two virtual schools running, one that was mostly synchronous and one that was traditionally asynchronous. Um, we actually called them on the backend virtual COVID and virtual traditional. So we had two separate high schools running this year. Uh, the virtual traditional still had our three hundred um, traditional students that, that were virtual campus students from prior. And then we had the four thousand students that had chose virtual learning um, because of the pandemic. And um, we were able to, to learn a lot. We were able to set up some focus groups with teachers and students and surveys with teachers and students on the best way to move forward um, with instruction and the best way to move forward as a, as a whole school in the amount of enrollment we could take. So we decided that our middle school would have a five hundred student cap. And we would use those ESER funds um, to staff all the positions for our middle school. And we've already kind of submitted those requests um, in, in the estimate that we're going to hit that five hundred students to staff that many uh, teachers and support staff for our middle school. And then um, what, what some don't know is that we're not only expanding to include a middle school, but we're actually uh, expanding our high school too to have no cap. Um, and then we would uh, transfer due to whatever our enrollment needs are at the end of this enrollment period. Similar to how we did it this year, um, but obviously to a much smaller capacity where depending on where the enrollment is coming from within our district, that's where we would staff our teachers. And then um, we are also expanding the course catalog for, for high school tremendously, largely in part due to our curriculum team and all the work that they put um, into this year and expanding what we could offer for all those virtual students. We are also gonna support or hire um, six twelve support staff with those ESER funds. So those are the COVID relief funds. Instead of saying we need nine twelve support staff and six twelve, or six eight support staff, we decided to look at as a whole, a whole school and what kind of support staff we would need for that school. So that includes um, um, office clerks, it includes counselors, associate principals, and then also a spec consultant, GT consultant and ELL and, and sped support. Traditionally, in, in our virtual campus, uh, traditional, um, before these years, we did not have those supports in place. We really leaned on our homeschools for that sped support and ELL support. So if a spec student was wanting to take virtual classes, they would take virtual classes with us, but still get whatever support they needed from their, from their traditional building. That is all changing. We want to operate as our own building and our own entity. So we're gonna have all of those supports um, that we actually utilize this year in, in our, in our virtual campus COVID. To uh, to extend that and, and make that a lot better and provide those supports for all students who wanna take part in virtual learning. So we developed all of that communication um, and it's all on our website. So if you wanted to know more, um, if you go to our website, you can see all that information. But I also just dropped in the chat a couple of links. One is obviously our website and the other one is the large communication that we sent out to all students and families on April twelfth. Within that communication, um, it, it's just a, a large FAQ to, to answer the, the, the questions that students and families needed to know when making that decision to enroll into virtual six twelve. Within that large communication, there are links that have even more details on what the middle school experience looks like, what the high school experience looks like, um, what their schedules look like. Um, and it also includes how they enroll or apply to virtual campus. So that was shared out on April twelfth and the enrollment application deadline is April thirtieth. So at the end of the day, April thirtieth, we'll look at what our numbers are. Um, and then we will uh, move forward with, with staffing that school accordingly. Currently, we are sitting at about, and it's been eight days, already five hundred people have chosen uh, the virtual experience. And right now, it's about half and half, half high school and, and half middle school. Um, and that's really not including the, the already two hundred and fifty students that are with virtual campus now. There are a select few that have already um, signed up to make sure they're gonna be a part of virtual campus next year too, but a lot of those students still haven't signed up either. So we are going to be just sending out weekly communications. Um, so we already sent one out at the beginning of this week and then we'll send another one out at the beginning of next week, just as reminders to this enrollment deadline or application deadline. And then we will, we will see where we're at from there. That's all I have. Um, I know you guys probably have more questions on what the middle school and high school experience look like. I can obviously share my screen and share that document with you and, and walk you through that. But um, I'll let Noel add anything she would like to and then I can answer any questions.
No, you've covered it, John.
I would, I would just add, John, that um, with envisioning the, the school, designing the, the school staff six twelve with its own complement of, of um, support functions like ELL and gifted and talented, special education and so forth, that makes it much more viable for us to market, um, to market this to students outside the district. Where we're not reliant on homeschool staff to provide some of those, um, some of those needed services that, that um, you know, open enroll in students may need, um, and for which we wouldn't really have a homeschool um, for them to get. So um, we're really hoping to learn a tremendous amount about the middle school experience this year. I think we're really primed to do a phenomenal job this year. But be, be very well positioned for this to be a, a player in the market um, outside of DMPS um, as we move forward.
For sure. Yeah, we've already uh, counted a, a select number of open enrollments that are coming in middle school and high school. But also taking into account, um, we've already have nine home instruction middle schoolers that have signed up for virtual campus, which is between sixty, seventy thousand dollars that we weren't traditionally receiving that are actually taking the virtual campus route now too. So that's, that's also already um, a, a huge plus.
Does anyone have any questions?
I have a couple of questions. Just looking at, and I just did a quick glance of what you shared in the chat. Thank you for, for sharing that. So it looks like for both middle and high school, they are synchronous learning, except for it looks like possibly high school on one day is asynchronous learning. Is that correct?
So for middle school, um, it is gonna be a little bit more, it's gonna be more synchronous than the high school experience. When we surveyed a lot of our students um, that were with virtual this year, we actually surveyed our asynchronous students that are a hundred percent asynchronous and then our synchronous ones. Um, and there was uh, a need for more flexibility and a need for more structure at the same time. So what we did was kind of created a hybrid um, of both worlds. Middle school is gonna be a little bit more structured, um, just knowing their age and um, their accountability level is, is, they're still growing and learning in that stage. So right now, what we have planned, and it's not set in stone, but it is what, what we're planning on moving forward with, is they would have um, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday would be synchronous days. However, um, in those synchronous days, there's actually asynchronous time built in throughout those days too. And then Wednesday would be an asynchronous day where they could um, set up asynchronous one-on-one times with their teachers. Teachers could also organize small groups, they could have office hours, they could bring students in person. High school has more flexibility. Um, so theirs is a Monday, Wednesday, Friday synchronous. There are ninety minute blocks. It's gonna be four by four um, still and operate in four terms and three to four blocks or not three to four blocks, four blocks in, but three to four classes. So there are ninety minute blocks. So there is still asynchronous time that's built into those ninety minute blocks too. So they're getting asynchronous time built into those Monday, Wednesday, Friday and then full asynchronous times on Tuesday and Thursday. For the, for the same reasons as, as, as middle school, for um, any office hours or, or one-on-one instructional time or, or, or uh, one-on-one meetings or small groups that teachers can, can set up. What we did take into consideration is in middle school, um, when we were developing the middle school, we wanted to make sure it was consistent moving over to the high school. So we actually developed our middle school into a four by four block two. We just made skinnies throughout. We did have a concern though with having like math and having such a huge gap between when they take math, because in a four by four, technically, they could have math in term one and then math again in term four, and they could have a whole semester off uh, for math. So instead, we actually built in a, a skinny for math and ELA. So they act, middle schoolers will have math every single day all year long, um, but on a forty-five minute block instead of a ninety-one. Um, but on a forty-five-minute block instead of a ninety-one. Um, just to make sure that they aren't missing any of that math and ELA instruction or having large gaps in between.
But there's not like an asynchronous, and I I use this as, um, I don't know, I think it was last fall or sometime I was talking with some students who liked the virtual learning because it allowed them to maybe go to work during the day and do their work when they had time to do that. So that asynchronous option was helpful for them. Um, so it, it, but it doesn't sound like that's an option anymore.
So they still have that option, um, just because they're, so the synchronous time is um what we offer. We offer that synchronous time, but a student can still pace themselves throughout and and work in their classes asynchronously. Um, and even throughout those days, uh, like I had mentioned, they're probably gonna see forty-five minutes synchronous, forty-five minutes asynchronous, so it's gonna just be blocked out through their day. Um, but yeah, you're right, uh, those, all those sessions will be recorded too. So if a student is missing that and because they, because they want to work or they have to pick up a job because they're that one of their parents lost their job because of COVID, um, they can still do that. And that was what kind, Kelly, that was actually what was kind of missing. Um, in our our synchronous approach in our virtual high school was that lack of flexibility, and they felt like they had to attend those synchronous times to be successful. And where asynchronous students were saying, there's almost too much flexibility. We need some type of structure set up for us. And that's why we kind of made sure that we have that hybrid, but students technically don't have to attend those synchronous times to be successful. They can still pace themselves asynchronous if our courses are set up that way. Um, so we're setting up, uh, we're, we're gonna be working with whatever new teachers that are coming to us to make a lot of different curriculum updates and changes um to make sure that we're accommodating that.
Okay, and kind of going into the staffing and the costs associated with this, and you said um, ESTER funds are gonna be used to staff this school, and so what's kind of the what's the long-term goal with the ESTER funds not being sustainable, sustainable funding? Um, how do we know that, you know, when ESTER funds are gone and we can't use them anymore, that we have funding to hold this up? And I mean, obviously, there's hope for maybe that the um, you know, the SSA funds will help with that, but I'm just kind of curious if you're looking at that in the long term.
So we absolutely are. Tom, I'm sorry, did you want to answer that?
Yeah, Kelly, so we're, we're using, uh, I would say we're using the ESTER funds as startup capital. Um, not knowing for sure what interest would be, so moving forward. Um, when this is part of the sort of the regular menu of options that families have, the staffing model, and John sort of referenced this with the the high school um portion of virtual campus, it will really look like staffing does uh in all of our schools, so it's really um being staffed at the level required by the students that register for that choice. And so the the virtual staff will be um you know, a part of the the larger faculty and um staffed, um, staffed according to need. Um, but it's really hard to get that um to happen in that very initial year when you have so many questions about enrollment and so forth. So we're taking advantage of the the ESTER dollars to kind of give us that startup capital boost that that we need to get things fully fleshed out and up and running before we have critical mass of students.
Okay, all right, yeah, I think that's it. Thank you.
I just wanted to ask, uh, so the the, you said, was it a cap or an estimation of five hundred kids?
It's a cap for middle school.
Right, so so let's say a thousand kids were to apply, like what what is the selection criteria gonna look like?
Yeah, that's a good question. We talked about that. Um, right now, our numbers are at about two fifty, so we're not anticipating that we would actually have to employ that. However, um, we are interested in ensuring that our uh demographics in virtual match the demographics of our district. Um, so we would, it would likely be kind of a random lottery system, um, certainly prioritizing health concerns as the first screen. Um, but then beyond that, it would, it would likely be a random um selection of students while also maintaining our demographic diversity.
I um, I really like this. I think this is great planning, and it's really exciting, and I think you all are doing very good work. Um, I've, I've thought about this over the year, about, you know, what happens starting next fall and how prepared parents are to put children back in school that that haven't been at all. And, and so I guess my question is, is there any consideration or preparation for um, marketing what we are doing beyond the borders of our district to bring in families outside of Des Moines?
We've certainly talked about that, and we were talking about likely ramping that up um next year. And the reason for that is, even though we would certainly never turn down any open enrollment, um, knowing that that brings dollars to our district, uh, we wanted to make sure that we could accommodate our families first. Um, so once we have a better handle on enrollment, then we'll certainly engage in more recruitment. Um, I've been in contact with uh various districts surrounding, um, I know Heartland. Other districts, a a lot of other districts are providing an online option, so we have more competition um than we've had pre-COVID. However, um, and this is just my opinion, I've not evaluated other programs. Um, but because other districts don't have the resources that we have or the staff um to necessarily pull off the heavy lift that is, has been our curriculum build, a lot of them are defaulting to purchase programs, um, which have proven to be very low quality historically. So we're hoping that by investing upfront and in in building a high-quality program, that that ultimately um, will win the day when it comes to recruiting students, but our our hardcore marketing um beyond what's already been done will likely uh happen next year.
Yeah, and to add to that, um, like we we are currently probably moving forward with marketing with Iowa High School Sports Network where they kind of market all of our um, our virtual campus, open enrollment and and our commercials and everything um at statewide competitions. Um, we're also gonna be start marketing at Safe Schools, and we just got an amazing um a uh school community coordinator um who's got a huge background in marketing that's gonna be a a great partner to have and really market to different community partners to to assist um as well. But even like, this is just random, so I'm gonna talk about it because it kind of excites me. Uh, but the Des Moines Buccaneers, I didn't know that they were like all high schoolers at all. And um, we have one of our teachers that's a huge fan and has season tickets and had talked to like their, their financial person and says that, yeah, all of these students were paying hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to hire them tutors while they travel and do work. And then he talked to her about our program, and I'm sending our our school community coordinator coordinator there in the next couple of weeks to to develop a partnership with like the Des Moines Buccaneers to to like literally educate all of those hockey players that are traveling and and um, and having to do schoolwork on the road, which is also extra money in our pocket, but also um they are Des Moines Buccaneers and they're serving our community too, and they're high schoolers in need of an education um because they're pursuing, like Tom said, some type of outside dream or passion of theirs. So it's really exciting, and I think that we'll be able to capitalize on a lot of that next year.
Clear any other questions from anyone else? Okay, um, hearing nothing else, Dr. Ahead, if you don't have anything else to add, we will go ahead and end our work session for this evening. I want to thank you all for your time, and please make sure that you check out um the links that were provided um to learn more information about our virtual um learning for middle school. Thank you.
Aaron, could you email those out so that we have those in the future? Thank you.